Not recorded?
Now it is, finally.
Okay, again, 7:04, the Rango Plan Board's order. December 6th, 7 o'clock PM, LWD School. I'd start with a call to order.
Right, hey.
Bob Coon.
John McInden.
Roger Moran.
Rich Canong.
Ted Rutway Planner.
And we're just planning what's ahead.
Tonight, we're gonna look at approval of minutes, two land use ordinance revisions. Item 1, 2, and 3, farm retail, downtown business district, and townhouse corner district. Sorry, I apologize for that. And townhouse corner district. Item 4, downtown business district. To move on to the planners' report. And as we have no public here right now, we'll open it up only if the public comes. So item 1 is approval of minutes. We do not have a quorum for the October 11th and November 8th or nor the November 29th minutes which were to be in review tonight. With permission of the board, I'd like to substitute a discussion on approval of the minutes for the actual approval of the minutes.
Sure. Yes, no problem.
Who is that person?
Yeah, for the past three, four meetings, we've had a quorum of four individuals. Bylaws says we need that quorum in order to approve the minutes. What I suggest within our bylaws that we may wanna consider approval by the majority of the members present the night minutes were taken. When you only have four, and we're only getting four here, the likelihood of getting that same four, as you can see, goes down. You might leave it as is, if you can.
I understand what you're saying. Do our bylaws say that it has to be the four people that were at that meeting?
Well, they'd be the only ones to know if it was.
But, yes, but if only three of those people were here at a meeting, could not those three people vote? We would have a quorum by having four people at the meeting, even though one of them was not at the original meeting.
And could it abstain? That's the ambiguity of the way that it's written.
Okay, good, 'cause I would think that that would be fine.
Yeah, I would think so, too.
Yeah, majority would be there. You know, again, I apologize to the board for not being here last week.
We're all gonna miss some of these. We have special meetings. Okay, we're gonna postpone all of these minutes until the next meeting. And listening to the board, we don't need to change our policy, but we're going to move forward. As long as we have quorum present for a meeting, we'll take votes on that thing as long as it's the majority of the board that was present at that meeting.
Okay.
Item 2, land use ordinance revisions. Item 1, farm retail operations. Ted gave everybody section 3.2 definitions. And there were two pages. Everybody had it copied with you. I think we all probably had a little bit of questions on this, Ted, so rather than having you comment, I'd like to just start and highlight some of the things that I saw, and then we'll put out through each of us if we can. Under 11, 6, 10, item 2, the spacing bulk standards, third item down, front side and rear setbacks, and the last item down, lot coverage. Would we not wanna just insert what the underlying district setbacks are and what the coverage is so that we don't have to? So somebody that has this, they can look at it and they've got it all in one place rather than having to go to another document?
It makes sense, except that when it comes to revisions, it also invites errors. We have to remember all of those places where you have those specific references and make sure that everything gets changed.
Good point.
And that's where we've had problems in the past.
Anybody else?
I tend to agree with you. One of the things that we were trying to get away from was having people look in multiple spots within the ordinance. And this is just gonna perpetuate that. 'Cause you're gonna have to go and you're gonna have to look at the setback requirements in another section of the ordinance to determine what applies here. I think it would be better to have it here.
Simplicity.
Yeah, actually, I believe you can set it up in Word to actually link back, so you only have to change it in one place. It could be done. And I know Ted's clever enough to do that, but...
Solar tunnel. Yeah, I would admit the town planner might be capable of doing that and not to offend any of the applicants who would come in. But I don't think they should have to go jumping through different sections of the ordinance to find out what's required.
There's nothing worse than going on this page. I wrote this page.
We have at least three. Marty, four, John?
Yeah, I don't mind specifying. I'm just pointing out that it invites errors.
So Ted, you don't mind getting in?
No. No, no. And I doubt seriously we'll have any revisions in the future. This will be so perfect.
Item 3, residency requirements. Second sentence down. Within the R1, R2 districts shall be also contained a single-family residential dwelling. I think when we get rid of the "single", as long as it's a family residential dwelling. If it's a multiple residence with sons and kids, and do it, who cares? As long as the principal owner is there. So I think we could delete "single".
See, when I saw that, I thought, well, it's a single-family residence. What do you do with somebody who has two places?
Yeah, that's my point. So if we just...
They can't have farm retail because it's not a single-family residence.
So what do you wanna change it to?
Just take out "single". So also contain family residential dwelling unit that serves as the farm retail owner's principal residence.
Right.
So it doesn't matter what he's living in. If he's living on the property, they can go ahead and do it.
I have a building large enough to house all families.
Uh-huh. As long as you're living in one of them.
But we don't have that anywhere, okay?
So you would...
Well, we don't right now. Maybe.
So you would allow a multifamily dwelling there?
It's allowed in the district.
Yeah.
It's maybe allowed in the district, huh?
It's not allowed in the R1, no, boy.
No. Yeah, there's a lot size.
Duplexes are allowed everywhere, huh?
Duplexes, but not multifamily.
Multifamily. So if we make that single, just a family residential.
But, yeah.
That would, to me, that would serve the purpose.
Actually, you don't even need the word "family". A residential dwelling unit that serves a farm retail owner's principal residence.
Yeah. The only problem I have with this is that it restricts it to the R1, R2.
Well, that's all reviewed. That's only for those, because up in the R3, R4... Oh, I see what you're saying.
I think if we're going to have farm retail and we're going to allow it in any of the residential districts, then the owner has to live on the premises. And whether it's an R1, an R2, or an R4, I think if we're gonna have a retail operation in a residential neighborhood, then the owner should be living there.
Question on that, Rich. Okay, if you have acreage, and you may have your retail, let's say, in the R1, along Route 1 or somewhere else like that, okay? But the majority of it is living in R3, we'll say. You tell me that he can't have it on Route 1? Because he's not living there?
Where is the retail space located?
The retail space is on Route 1.
Then I would say, unless he's living there, yes. It's not allowed.
Because he's bringing his product.
Were you saying that the lot spans R1 and R2?
No.
Multiple locations.
No, I'm just saying is...
He happens to live in another location that wants to put his retail.
And I would say no.
I would say no, as well.
So you wouldn't want that on Route 1?
It's not a question of whether I'd want it on Route 1. It's a question of...
If he lives there, he can do it.
Because this is, we are creating a special set of circumstances.
He owns two properties.
But wait a minute.
Then he can farm the other piece of property and live on the Route 1 property.
Hold on just a second. R1, you can have any kind of retail. I mean, Route 1, you can have any kind of retail. So why couldn't you have farm retail?
Because I'm assuming I'd be specifically discussing from the point of view that it would be an R1 zone. If it's on Route 1, it's not gonna be farm retail on Route 1. It's just gonna be straight retail. Farm retail is restricted to the residential areas, R1, R2, R3, and R4. So Route 1 would not have a farm retail on it. It would just have a retail shop, which would be fine. I think if it's going to be in the residential zone, wherever that retail facility is located, that's the property the owner has to live on. He could have multiple pieces of property where he's farming where the shop is located.
Ted, here comes.
Anybody been up to Moosehead?
Not recently.
Anybody ever been up to Moosehead?
Yes.
Yes.
You know, as you go through Coruna?
Yeah.
Which is the corn capital of Maine, pretty much? How many large-scale, what we would consider the farm retail operations do you see along the road there? I could think of like six or seven right off the top of my head. Nobody lives there. And I think of Gillespie Farms and their large complex. Nobody lives there. And I think of Pineland Farms. Nobody lives there. And their retail operations. And Maxwell's. And Maxwell's in Cape Elizabeth.
Well, the other one is like down at 236.
Nobody lives there. The point I'm making, and I'm not just trying to think of the one candidate that we have right now who is for all intents and purposes a farm retail. I'm just thinking that I understand why we wanna make it residency required in the R1 and R2 districts, because those are small districts. I mean, they're small residential, higher-density districts, which is a real, this is not an imposition, but this has the potential to be an imposition in the neighborhood unless it's done correctly. And we've spent a lot of effort trying to ensure that it is not an impact to those denser neighborhoods. But I think when we get into our rural district, into our R3 and R4, which is a rural area, that we're gonna find situations where people are gonna own land that they farm that are separate parcels from where they live. And the most immediate one, and I hate to be a respecter of persons on this, but the most immediate one that we've got is Finklepot Farm. Finklepot Farm is our existing farm retail. They just haven't graduated up to that yet. They could in any moment, right now. But there's nobody who lives on that property. That's a farm right now, heavily farm, intensive farm, going to be even more intensive farm. They have a big, huge barn that they put in there for storage of produce. They have their community agricultural program going there. And right now, they're planning to be farm retail. We're kind of taking that away from them right now, that regulation, because our current farm retail allows them to operate there. And they've made their investments based on that. And now we're going to require them to move from the present residence and build a residence on that farming land. I'm wondering if that's counterproductive to the direction we wanted to go. And I hate to use them as the only example.
Yeah, no, but in general, in the rural areas, much more lateral, but this is more inclusive given more opportunity. Restrictive only in R1, R2 because it costs proximity of the residences. And we did have that discussion.
I understand what Rich is trying to say.
Yeah, me too.
Rich wants to make sure that we don't have wall-to-wall retail. John brought this up, too. People don't take advantage of this to bring in something that's not farm-related or not really a farm operation as an opportunity just to put in some retail somewhere. I understand that concern. And we also sort of want the owner-investor to be fully invested in this continuing operation by living in the property. But I think in many cases, it may not necessarily be lost in some of our larger land areas like the R3 and the R4.
How are you, does anybody hear?
Just your question. How is a thought not in a subdivision? Classifying it that if it's not in a subdivision or that way it's not gonna impact your other neighbors? This is... Is a thought.
Where are you gonna get five-acre lots?
Yeah, we're gonna have five acres.
No, 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 in R1 and in R2.
Yeah, there's five, five-acre lots.
Requires a minimum lot size of five acres in any district.
Okay, then that's still... I mean, I was just, I was thinking, if you live in a...
Yeah, you certainly wouldn't wanna do it on a tiny lot in a subdivision.
No, that's...
And you wouldn't be able to expect quite a few more. That's why we did with the five acre. And if the board wanted to ensure that this isn't going to be, somebody's gonna lop a little five-acre parcel off along Route 111 and put a bean garden in the back and slap in a large sheet of 5,000 square foot store facility there. I mean, we can increase the acreage in those larger districts, in those large, in the R3 and R4, if you wanted to. And I played with that idea. I wasn't sure, you know, I wasn't sure how far I wanted to go 'cause it seemed arbitrary.
I mean, it's already arbitrary.
Ten acres, does that sound good? Fifteen acres?
Yeah.
What sounds good, you know? Soon as we set the acreage, we'll immediately get an applicant who's like two-tenths of an acre under. It's always what happens.
My only concern with that is you're saying that the residents can be someplace else. They own 10 acres here, and that's where the farm retail is gonna be. Now, I own the same 10 acres. And you already allow retail in that district. So now I'm gonna handle tractor pods in that district. I'm just gonna retail tractor pods. Why am I being single? I'm handling tractor pods if someone's selling condos. Retail is retail.
That's always been one of the stumbling points of this stuff thing is we wanna encourage agriculture. And that's what our comp plan tells us to do. Recognizing fully that agriculture is, when we strip down all the butalic elements of it, is industrial and it's retail. It's an industrial production product, and it's sold, which is retail. Is there a difference between the products here? The only thing that's different between tractor products and this is that your tractor products are probably not produced on site or on any of the lands that you own, unless you're doing a great mine and smelting operation. And it's not a targeted industry that the townspeople want to promote in this community. We made special provisions along with the state. Point frankly, the state's got their Agricultural Protection Act, which was passed in 2007 after you guys did this, which is pretty aggressive in protectionism. And I guess both the state and the towns that agriculture is a retail or an industrial operation that we wanna promote in the state of A. We want to save and promote in the state of A. So that's why we're making that distinction. You're right, from a fairness standpoint, why should we make a distinction? That's because our townspeople and our state legislators said we can do it if we wanted to.
I don't want to.
Well, there we go.
It's that simple. I think if you're gonna run up farm retail, live on the property. We're not saying that you have to, that you can't farm someplace else. You can have 50 acres across the street. But the spot where you're having that retail operation is where you're gonna be living.
No. But now, what about my situation? If I wanted to have a farm retail, but I wanted to put it in the field across the road? There's no house there. I'm living on the other lot across the road.
Yeah. And you'd have it on the lot you're living on. That's what I think farm retail should be.
But, you know, the purpose of having a residential, well, owner living there, some kind of a residential presence. I think the purpose of that is that in a more closely packed area like R1 and R2, you have, as neighbors, someone more direct to deal with as opposed to someone who comes in from wherever.
Where do you draw the line and say, okay, you can have it on this piece of property? Well, I have six or seven lots, assigned by each, stretching down 111 on the other side of the road. I can put it all the way down at the other end 'cause after all, I own all those lots. No. I think that violates what we're talking about in terms of having a residence there.
But now you're talking in a more rural area where things are more widely spaced anyway. And your neighbor is likely to be a half a mile down the road anyway.
Okay.
So what does it matter if your farm stand is half a mile down the road?
If it's all on the same lot, it doesn't.
You just said the word "farm stand". I made the same mistake last week.
Farm retail.
Farm stand can be...
It's a glorified farm stand.
Okay.
And if I may, Mr. Jim, it's fortuitous that you brought that up because I was just looking at the definition of farm stand. And our farm stand says, and this is a lot anywhere. There's no restrictions anywhere. A temporary structure not exceeding 200 square feet located on private property and used for the sale of products such as fruit, vegetables, flowers, herbs, plants, unprocessed foodstuffs. Home-processed food products such as jams, jollies, pickles, sauces, or baked goods and homemade handicrafts. No commercially packaged. Handicrafts are commercially processed or packaged. Foodstuffs shall be sold at a farm stand. No mention of, A, that you have to farm on the land that's located, or that you have to live on the land that the farm stands are located.
And we actually had a discussion when you put that together.
No, no, that was...
Yes.
Okay, I'm not sure. I'm calling Uber to have it down. Let me people in the R3, R4. So we have Rich leaning that way.
Well, I'm not leaning that way.
All the way over Rich is all the way.
He's tacking hard.
In so many ways.
Roger.
I'm the one who brought it up, so I gotta sign with Richard a little bit.
Okay, John?
As far as that's concerned, I don't see a problem with restricting that residency to R1 and R2.
Yeah, but the question is, they wanna extend it to 3 and 4.
Yeah, and, well, so I would, I have no problem with the way it's written. So not extending it is what I would be in favor of. Not extending it to 3 and 4, keeping it limited to 1 and 2. So allowing, in other words, allowing farm retail without residency on the lot in 3 and 4.
That's the way we're gonna write it, aren't we?
We have the words written now. The words written now, R1, R2.
That's the opposite of what is written. R1 and R2 require residential dwelling.
Right.
John is meaning to 3 and 4 not requiring a residential dwelling.
Which is the way it's written.
Which is the way it's written.
Except it just doesn't specify it so many words.
But it, well, it does. It says any lot within the R1 or R2.
Yeah, okay.
And I'm saying it should be any lot. That's farm retail.
No, no, now that I think about it, when you get up to 3 and 4, you're gonna allow in. You're not dealing with five acres. It could be, but they could be, you know, four or five, and stretched down the road.
Marty?
I don't think you need to live there. But you got five acres.
You either have 3 to 2 or 4 to 1.
Marty, if you have to have five acres in the R1, so you're saying you shouldn't even have to live there in the R1 district?
No.
Okay. I don't even think it should be in the R1. But that's a whole other... I lost that point.
But if it's gonna be in the R1, you know, you don't want it. If it's gonna be there...
We're talking two different questions.
Oh, no.
No, 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 I just wondered.
No, I know, but so that Marty understands what he said. He didn't answer the question. You're saying, no, Doc. He said, no to R1. He didn't think it was necessary for R1 or 2. It's not the question before the board. The board, the question is, do we want them to have to reside in a dwelling in the R3 and R4?
No.
No, okay, completely different. So it's 3 to... So let's, we can move, at least we can move forward. Everything's open.
Okay, so we're taking off the...
Well, what is the resolution then?
The resolution is just take out single-family residency requirement and leave it as is.
It shall contain a residential dwelling unit.
Right.
Delete single-family.
Delete, yeah.
Okay, but it's still gonna be the R1 and R2.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, Peter got free only first. I don't want R2.
Question for you. Along that thought. Can you have a trailer there? Camper there, you're living on it.
Not considered as a residence, though.
It's still do.
It's not a residential dwelling unit.
Can be. Camper is a residential dwelling unit.
It's not considered a dwelling unit. It's more than a smartie. It's considered a temporary or camping structure. It's not considered a residential dwelling unit.
I'm gonna skip.
It's a very good point. It's a very good...
I have a point with number 4.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm gonna skip 4 'cause John wants to go into that in a little bit more detail.
What is 5?
4, which is origin and principal product.
Origin and principal product.
Yeah, I have a...
I, I have a problem with part of number five.
I have also a problem with part of that.
Okay, let's go, let's just do it in order.
I was first.
Six and seven.
We'll do four.
So, in, in number four, the first thing that caught my eye was at least 50%. And my question to Ted is, how is that different from saying it's permitted as a secondary and seasonal use, which is the definition of farm retail? If it's at least 50%, then, well, if it's 51%, then, I mean, if it's 51%...
Forty-nine percent is secondary.
Right. So, I mean, you're, I, I think you're kind of being redundant there, is what I'm saying.
Question along that line is done. I don't know where it falls, but ask the, the wool, okay? Wool is produced, okay, but it's part of a co-op, okay? And the amount of wool is being produced by one's individual may not be enough. Say, if you're only doing, you know, by the number of animals we use as that, it's only produced so much wool. But turn on being part of the co-op, they still can get more product.
But what, what Ted is saying, the way I understand what he's written here in number four, is that if, and we'll take the wool as the example, that you must produce at least 50% of the wool that you sell as a final product. So if you produce 100 pounds of wool, you can't sell more than 200 pounds of product. Right? But that's the same, almost, in terms of fractions anyway, as saying that it's, it has to be a secondary use.
No, I think a secondary use applies to the, um, the residence and the farm retail operation.
Okay.
No.
Okay, we're gonna go back, we're gonna, we're gonna ask Ted for a little bit of clarification, because the wool, or the example given, is actually done in five special uses and is exempt from this 50% or being, according to the way I read this. So Ted, if you could kind of walk us through the intent and why this is here?
Well, it was spurred in part by what John was talking, some of John's concerns at the last meeting about, and, and others' concerns about this being a front for operations conducted primarily elsewhere, not in the rural, not on the land there. And I was thinking not of wool, but of corn, just use corn as an example. Fifty percent frankly is an arbitrary number, we can change it to anything you want to, and how enforceable is, is another big question. I don't, Jim, Jim will quite frankly shake his head and say, I can't enforce this, there's no way I'm going to follow this. I mean, there's no way I can, I can, unless I receive bills of waiting from, you know, from, uh, from the producer for every single truckload of corn that comes in, there's no way I can enforce this.
What's mailed?
Whatever, whatever, there's no way to enforce it, we cannot enforce it. The objective, what I was trying to do here was saying that, I was, I was trying to figure out a way that we could ensure that this was not going to be a farm, a farm retail operation primarily for goods being grown outside of the property in which this is located, because there's nothing in here that specifies how much product can be, uh, possibly grown on the site. Now, and with that, basically, what we're basically concerned about in that situation is that somebody puts in, I mean, five rows of beans, but they're bringing in 20 tons of beans from their farms in Poland or, or Cape Elizabeth or something, and using this...
Or they sold them to B and M or someone, they have baked beans.
Yeah, or anything like that, and that this is not just a front. But, you know, as I look at this more and more, I realize this is extremely difficult to enforce.
How about using the word produced in May? Grown in May?
I, I don't, I don't care about where it's grown in May, I just want to make sure that, that, I mean, take, take Pilate Four, since we've used that as an example so many times. Much of their meat, for instance, is actually grown in Arustic, disappointing. They have fields in Arustic and in South Dakota. How am I gonna, and what am I gonna say there? If they were to come here, oh, well, show me 50% of this, on this field is, of this, these cattle are actually fed on this, this, uh, field when they move them around, you know, based on the season and so forth. It's, I was trying to get at that problem that you brought up, and I just don't have a good solution for 50% that just can't enforce, unless they provide evidence of that when they first come in and then thereafter.
What's your word?
I, I would argue that I could have a, a five-acre piece of land over here on the Limerick Road in the R1 district, and I could raise, I could put up a couple of strings of green beans, or, or better yet, broccoli. I could have a couple of rows of broccoli, and I have 700 acres of broccoli growing up in the county. This says it, as long as it's my land, I could sell it in that farm stand.
Yeah, that's true, and why not?
Yeah. I'm, if we're, if we're gonna allow them to have the farm stand, you're right, why not?
You know, the other thing we keep forgetting is the square footage of, of the building that this is gonna be in. You're not gonna be putting a hollow wall that's up to 1,000 square feet.
No, probably not.
Then...
I can double decorate, but I mean realistically...
Well, did you, did you guys all look at, at, and this is something I assure is actually going to be the, the gasoline can and this whole thing, it was overlooked, and that was a maximum farm retail floor area? It changes with the district.
Yeah.
Of the, but...
5,000 square feet.
Which isn't that big anyways.
It's still not big anyway. I mean, if I've got 20 acres of land, I've got 5,000...
Yeah, it's 50 by 100. I mean, it's...
But if you're gonna, if you're gonna put in one of these operations, this retail broccoli center, the retail bean or, or...
Furniture store.
Whatever.
Yeah, like, are you a furniture store?
Secondary use, made out of wood.
Not, not if you're prin, not if, the principal product, I don't care about 50%. I think there's a, a thing here that people are growing it, they're raising it, it is their livelihood, um, here. Now, they're gonna sell something in the secondary. If furniture overwhelms the broccoli, then it can't be, can't be put in.
Oh, furniture from the wood I'm growing out back?
That's forestry, not agriculture. Forestry's not any of them.
That's not agriculture?
No, it's forestry.
And doesn't count if you're making wood pellets out of it.
So, I mean, that 50%, there's, the principal products, if qualified as farm retail, there has to be some principal products grown, raised, loved, something on track.
Well, 50% is an arbitrary number.
It is arbitrary.
So, and it's unenforceable. It's unenforceable, so I...
But any number is unenforce, I mean, it is so difficult, that's my point. It's, it would be so difficult to prove or so easy to manipulate, you know?
Well, I, I think it just puts the applicant on notice that there is, there's a line there, like, you just leave it open, and you can take it out altogether.
See, I do, I, I just think farm retail has to have principal products that are... If they do, and that, we could, that, art, because we said there's secondary uses up above, so maybe there's 10 items or 20 items that make these principal, these 20 items have to make up more than 50%. It might be one, it might be a corn stand, or a pumpkin stand, or, or whatever, but there may be 20 products with a farm, and that would be their principal use, to sell those 20. And then if they want to bring in other stuff, hey, open it. So I just take out that 50, and as John suggested, it's just re-saying what's up here, if you have a primary and secondary kind of use, block, process, whether you're going to go...
Question?
Yeah.
I'm looking down at the very bottom. Wild...
For special uses?
Yeah, it says, wild-caught fish in game, not qualified, okay? Now, what about turkeys?
You can't sell game turkey, not wild, not wild turkey.
Is that wild turkey?
No, but, but it's only...
Turkey farm.
That's not a, but that's not a wild game. Turkey farms could, turkey farm would go.
I, I honestly looked at that statement and thought, why is it there? We're talking about raising something on premises, and now we add in wild-caught fish in game? By definition, it wasn't raised on premises.
Well, I could have a precise fine with wild...
Ah, but agriculture included in this.
Right.
You didn't want to exclude agriculture.
It's, if you...
That's why I may want to make distinction between wild and farm-raised fish.
Right.
Or, and, well, you'll kill me for this, or somebody who's doing lobstering, setting up, selling lobster.
Like the guy in, in Waterford on Town, Townhouse Road, he's got a nice little pond and he sells lobsters out of it, where he's getting his lobsters from.
Yeah, there's a lot of difference. I've seen those on Limerick State. You put in a little saltwater pond, keep the lobsters there, have their retail businesses, little shacks and...
Yeah, but that's actually an aquarium, that's not where they kind of raise their , they aren't sea...
Yeah, I'm just saying, yeah.
They're just pecking.
They, they could say they're raising them from that. Pound and a quarter, go pound and a half.
No, you actually can't, not with lobster.
So you, you're in favor of taking out four altogether, John?
No, I can't, well, I, I think that John's, and, and what I agree is just principal pro, to qualify as a farm retail operation, um, there must be principal products, you know, that's all. And they must be grown on site, the principal products are...
Or on other lands.
Or on other land.
On other lands growing, that's why I brought in, I also included that agriculture thing, mentioning ponds that you own. You're not going, you're not going to the hatchery, the city hatchery, picking up all these brook trout, and shipping them over and putting it in, and putting them in your, in your farm stand, because you've got a small pond in which you're raising brook trout out of that, same as yours, so in other lands that you own or lease, or lease, leasing is fair, there's leasing, there's leasing done in farming. It's just the quantity of product that is, I mean, I question my writing here, I just can't enforce 50%. And I have to look at you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm saying that that, that's gonna be, to me, it's redundant. The only thing I would keep in number four is the, in last sentence, the wild-caught, you're making it clear that that does not qualify as a principal product, but that may even be rolled into the definition of farm retail.
See, I would, I would look at it and think that if we're, if we're gonna have farm retail, I think number four should, should say, to qualify as a farm retail operation, the principal product sold at the farm retail operation must be grown on site. Sale of product from off-site farmland or agricultural ponds shall be permitted provided these lands are owned or leased by the owner of the farm retail operation.
Yeah, 'cause that's not included in the top definition.
Well, I, I would simply say it has to be grown on site, or the owner has to own the land.
You bring up a very good...
It isn't the top definition.
Just remember, the top definition's gonna be in section three. The reason for being, in a way, the way for being, this is redundant, just kind of reiterate...
Because it's in a different location.
It's in a different location.
Well, okay, I, I have no problem with it in that case, right?
But to follow your, to follow your logic, Rick, in way this is in, that should, that that should read, now, just start at the end of the, start at the beginning, qualify as a farm retail operation, um, the principal product sold at the farm retail operation must be grown on site. Lands owned or leased by the owner of the farm, or lands owned or offered by the retail operator. And then the sale of products from off-site farmland or agricultural, additionally, they also be sold, but they'll, they have to own those as well.
Yeah, well, that's, that's pretty much what I'm saying.
Yeah, so both sentences need to be inclusive of, of that land.
Okay, how shall we word this, so I make sure that I get this down properly?
Okay, how about turn it, operated must be grown on land. Product from off-site farm or agricultural will, shall be permitted as long as land are owned and leased by owner of the farm retail.
Not leased. All you gotta do, all you gotta do is just take out, uh, at, when you get to operations, take out at least 50% of the volume of the principal product, and just start saying the retail operation, uh, qualifies as a farm retail operation, the principal products...
Right, sold at the farm retail must be grown on site.
Right, just, just clean that up a little bit.
And then I would leave that next sentence that starts with sale of product, I would leave that in there in its entirety.
Yeah.
Because it says that in order to have the farm retail, the principal product has to be grown on site. If you've got other lands, you can grow product on those other lands and bring them in.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what it's gonna read.
So I just take that.
But the principal, part of these principal product or products may be at some of these other pieces of land that they own. So, again, I just wanna, I just wanna reiterate that at the farm, again, and I agree, the principal products sold at the farm retail operation must be grown on site or on the lands that are owned or leased by the owner of the farm retail operation, that then needs to be repeated when you say sale of products from off-site farmland or agricultural ponds shall be permitted, provided these lands are also owned or leased by the owner of the farm retail operation. So the assertion of the also says you gotta grow it, it's gotta be part of your principle in order to qualify, and then you can sell secondary, it may not be your principal one, but maybe you have a small little thing over here that you want to sell that spot. Does that make sense to you?
I, yeah, I understand what you're saying, I just think we, we, you're putting in, you're, you're being redundant because you're repeating the same se, the same section, the last sentence, I think, is being repeated, because you're going through and saying, to qualify as a farm retail operation, the principal product sold at the farm retail operation must be grown on the site or produced from off-site farmland or agricultural, aquacultural ponds. Sale of the product from off-site farmland or agricultural ponds shall be permitted provided those lands are owned or leased by the owner. Am I, am I underst, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and, and the reason is, we're dealing with origin. The, the title of the paragraph is origin of product. So there's an origin, there's an origin for growth, and what be, in my opinion, I'm, I'm talking about, stop me, I do that often. So there's an origin for both that growing, raising, and then there's an origin, if you will, if you're gonna sell it, then you also have to make that same first years.
Okay.
I mean, that's where, that's where my logic, whether it's some, I don't know, and maybe, maybe, maybe we included just in the, the...
Well, I think we're saying the same thing, we're just using different, different words to get there.
Product sold... So, if I may, reiterate here, to qualify as a farm retail operation, the principal products sold at the farm retail operation must be grown on the site. Sale of product from off-site farmland or agricultural ponds shall be permitted provided these lands are also owned or leased by the owner of the farm retail operation. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Wild-caught game, I mean, it qualifies as principal products in farm retail operation.
Do we need to say that, though?
Only if, that's, again, the same sort of thing, like, if you're, if you're a fisherman who goes out into the Atlantic Ocean.
Well, then you could sell it as a secondary use.
Or even a fisherman who has a fish pond out in the ocean, a sea nap, because it's not originating here, at least some of it has to originate here.
Basically saying, you gotta put something here.
Okay.
Otherwise, that is truly retail, because that's not promoting an activity here in the world.
Are you, you're gonna say you have Charlie in the, in the aquarium, right?
But he's not, he's not, it's a wild-caught...
Okay, we're moving at, we're moving at about 50 minutes, and we're still on page five, so let's try to, I'm not trying to get a little short, let's vote. I mean, we're on item number five of page one. John, you want to talk special uses?
Well, yeah, my, my problem with the way special uses is written here, and I, I mentioned it, and I thought the board had voted on it, and we didn't take a formal vote, but I had mentioned it a couple of times, that the way it is written here, it, the board is favoring a particular use, or, you could say, another way, discriminating against all other uses. In other words, we're picking a winner. I think it should be more general than that. I should, I think that statement should have, should be inclusive of any type of use that may qualify, may potentially qualify as farm retail. And in that regard, I had proposed language prior to this, and I can read that again if you want me to.
Yes, sir. The other problem I have with that, it says may permit. What, what's gonna be the criteria for permitting it?
Why would it come in under our condition?
But I would, I would make the argument that if we make the adjustment to four and take out at least 50% of the, of the products sold, we don't need number five. We don't need special conditions of any kind, because we've eliminated a percentage of sale, which is what number five is addressing.
But the, the only, the special case that this, in my mind, addresses is the case where you produce some of the product, which gets processed elsewhere, comes back for sale, but you may be selling not exactly the product you sent out and possibly more than the amount that you sent out, and that will not be included in the definition.
So, can you read your five?
Yeah, my proposed wording was as follows. The planning board may permit farm retailers to sell their materials even if these goods are not composed of the exact materials and quantities produced by the farming operation.
So again, to sell their materials even if these...
Even if these goods are not composed of the exact materials and quantities produced by the farming operation. produced by the farming operation.
I don't think that's any different than what that line says.
Well, it's taking out.
Yeah.
It's taking out woolen hair.
Right.
Yes.
So that you're not saying, okay, woolen hair people, we love you, we don't love everybody else.
Yeah, that was a perfect.
So if there's something, yeah, so if there's something else that anybody, I couldn't think of.
Well, I could think of meat. I could think of, I could think of beef, poultry, anything like that. Beeswax. You're gonna be raising bees and import beeswax after it's processed.
First piece.
Candles. Would we, but are you going to do, I mean, truly, are you going to have your principal products be beeswax?
If I wanna sell Yankee candles, yeah.
Or honey, or honey. Let's say the principal product is honey.
Okay, then you're not gonna sell farm equipment, because that's not gonna be secondary to it.
No, but you're gonna buy, you're, you're going to, you're going to do honey, and you might do.
Honey candles.
And you might do honey candy, or more importantly, you might, you might be retailing. In most cases, you're probably gonna be selling your honey bulk to Subi or something. Not to Subi, but let's, let's use Subi right now. You're gonna be selling it to that outfit. That means you're gonna be putting Subi honey up on the shelf, saying, some of this was produced here. And the same thing with beef. And you might have beef, or you raise cattle. And you send the cattle off to the butcher's. Goes to the, to the butcher shop, and they send back beef, may not be yours.
Yeah.
Now you have a meat shop.
I, no, I, I agree with all of that.
Turkey, as you mentioned, turkey, chicken, the same sort of.
Yeah, but there, there should be no problem with any of that.
Right.
Who cares? I mean, that wonderful, good idea, if they can do it, in fifteen hundred square foot building.
Except five thousand, I could think.
Yeah, and freezers take up a lot.
You see how much, yeah, you see how much.
The only problem I had with, with number five is the underlying section. The applicant shall provide the planning board with sales receipts. I'm sorry, I'm not the auditor, and I'm not responsible for enforcing the ordinance. And I don't think Jim wants to do it either.
Jim's not. That's why the planning board's there.
No.
No, I'm not, I'm not in charge of enforcing.
Sticking to the CEO, man.
That's why I didn't include that.
That's who's getting paid the big bucks, we're not.
I, I don't, I honestly don't think that, that we should tell the CEO that he has to go out and look at all those receipts and figure that stuff out.
I think it's a great statement, number one.
Okay.
And I think it, as special uses must, must come before the planning board. And that's at, at the, at the, at the time of the application.
At the time of the application, you're not gonna be able to prove any of that.
Receipts, you don't have the receipts, and you don't have business going yet.
Right, you're not gonna be.
Or other information necessary to show that he plans to be actively engaged in with it. It's gonna be part of his permitting process, what he's going to have, what he's going to.
But that's not what that says.
No, I know.
Because this says he is actively engaged.
Yeah, no, I know.
Well, most people don't start a farm retail operation and then start their farming operation afterwards. And their, their objective is to produce the product, and then as they, as they produce enough product, and to the point where they can sell it, or they can contract out bulk to other, to a manufacturer, or a wholesale, or a co-op, then, then they'll get an opportunity to sell it from that standpoint. They're buying product from the co-op, or buying, I mean, rebuying that, the finished product or the processed product back from the manufacturer.
So we're gonna look at this on a one-time basis and say, then, okay, you've provided me with the receipts, and now, a couple of years from now, I'm not gonna worry about it. But personally, I don't, I don't see where we should be doing that kind of work.
Let's kind of due diligence, making sure that we just, that we ensure that they, you know, that by doing this, what this does, think of it this way. Is Jim gonna go out, or his, his successor, are they gonna go out and start tallying up all these receipts and requiring these guys to give the receipts of years?
Of course not.
But if you get a situation where somebody is grossly in violation, I mean, willfully in violation. Ah, I got rid of my herd years ago. I'm selling beef now, you know, you gave me the permit, that's all that matters. You know, if you based it on some empirical evidence that they provided, and they cannot, if you were to say, well, we think you're in violation, can you provide us with the information? That information, can you, can you verify this information is still valid? At least the code enforcement officer has some empirical data, go on. If you wanna do an ADK on this.
I, I would say, but I would argue that the, that at that point, the codes enforcement officer has no business asking me the ordinance, says the planning board. And we're not in the enforcement business.
Yeah. You know, it's not, but what happens is, you may not be in the enforcement business, but you set down the conditions upon which the code enforcement officer enforces that. Other, otherwise, any of the conditions you put down in any of the applications that you've approved so far are no enforced. If they're, you're saying, if it's not written in here that the code enforcement officer does it instead of us, then, then it's no longer valid. Well, then, frankly speaking, many of the conditions that you place on applicants that you've approved in the last three years that I've been here are not enforceable.
I can think of one right now. Well, I got a better one. I got a better one. Instead of using the planning board, put town manager.
Yes, actually, you know what? Town manager has no jurisdiction in this matter. The planning board has the regulatory, you have the review and regulatory jurisdiction. That's granted you both by this ordinance and by, by the statutes. Town manager has no authority.
I, I would.
Neither does the codes enforcement officer. Code enforcement officer has no authority to approve things unless it's granted by the ordinance or the planning board.
I would, I would not object to this statement if it took out the sales receipts contracts and all of that stuff. If it read simply that shall provide the planning board with convincing information to verify that the farm retailer is or will be actively engaged in producing raw materials. So that in order to get this special use approval, the applicant has to provide some kind of information to the board.
Appropriate documentation.
Appropriate documentation that would be available would be sales receipts and invoices, proof that they're actually running the business.
Well, is or will be goes, goes to their application. This is what they plan on building, this is what they plan on doing, and this is what their hours of operation are going to be. And, and if they, if we think all of those things go into the farm retail, there could be a violation of code enforcement. Somebody made a complaint that they weren't complying, code enforcement officer will be able to tell if they were.
If we, who have that documentation, and they can't reproduce that documentation that's current, then he's got something to work with. He's got something he can hang his hat and report on. Uh, if he, if he doesn't have that, that baseline information, which would be provided by going through the planning process, then he's, the judge's gonna say, what are you basing this assumption on, Mr. Nagel? He's gonna say, well, back then, he was gonna do this. Well, what proof do you have of that? None. Some, some documentation that provides him with some empirical data that he can hang his hat. And that's all, nine times out of ten people who are gonna be doing this are not gonna care about this, because anybody who wants to really do a retail operation is not gonna wanna be on the road. They're gonna be on one eleven, or they're gonna wanna be on Route One, maybe, maybe Long Cabin, down near the port. But they're certainly not gonna be on, on Don Hill Road.
Everybody kind of agrees with John's comments? Right, well, it is right. Yeah, I mean, that's what you're saying, right? Sounds good.
Yeah, I mean, yes.
Is or likely to.
But just realize that this will include, you know, this probably could include other products. John brought up beeswax and so forth. Um, and, and honey, and meat, and poultry. May not, safety, these guys are raising, just understand it.
Yeah, they're gonna show the intent of where they were, they grow, and they bring another product, that principal product could change over time.
And I think also in that situation, we might find a situation where we'll say, well, you know, we can understand Mrs. Drew's situation, where she produces a whole product. And obviously, she can't weave it there. She's gotta send it off somewhere, and it goes into a co-op. Chickens, I'm raising chickens here. Well, that's pretty easy to, you know, send them to a slaughterhouse, and they come back and you're selling them here. I mean, you might sell, even sell them wholesale, obviously, to a supplier, but you're gonna keep some of those, or have them, do a special batch and bring it back. That, that's easier to track and easier to, to question than if we'd be, you know, you have five sides of beef, five joints of.
You have to question, now you gotta do is see the chickens on the property.
Or the, or what if they're raised off? Well, they have, some of them have to be on the damn property. They have to be on the property, you know? It's good to work, it's good to work.
So, yeah, I liked your, I liked your input.
Yes, exact word.
I'm gonna have to send it to the board, because I can't write a status. I have two composed of, oh, that, oh.
Okay. The exact materials and quantities. Produced by the farming operation. And then that last sentence is changed. I don't, do you need that done too, later?
The last sentence, the applicant shall provide the planning board.
With the applicant shall provide the planning board with.
Appropriate, appropriate convincing.
Well, I had convincing, I had, I had a suggestion of empirical, and I had appropriate.
With the exception of empirical, they're all subjective.
Objective.
What's, what's, no, what's appropriate? I bring you in a bunch of receipts. Well, only was qualified to tell me that these are appropriate.
But you're using the planning board may permit, so the fact that you got that may in there.
No, this says the planning board, uh, the planning board may permit farm retailer, but the applicant shall provide the planning board with, with proof that you're actually doing it. What word do we use?
Right.
If, if we say appropriate, who's to determine it's appropriate?
That's why I put in convincing, because you have to convince the planning board.
That's subjective, again.
Well, only until the time of the vote.
So would you suggest empirical documentation?
Empirical documentation would be better.
What's empirical documentation?
Numbers.
Numbers.
Right.
You've got numbers to back up what you're saying, because otherwise, it is purely subjective.
I'm fine with the word empirical.
Well, my crystal.
That's mine, too. Is your crystal ball gonna work ahead of time? Yeah. You're, you're applying for the permit? Yeah, you're just, you're, you're, you're starting a business, you're starting a work, so you can, you can identify your principal products, you can do that, but you can't.
Oh, you have some numbers, sure.
The farmer retailer is actively engaged in producing the raw material from which the finished goods are going to be coming. That's an empirical standard.
If you're gonna have a business, you better have some numbers. But remember, number is still subjective.
Well, yeah.
Can you read it one last time?
Okay, so empirical information.
Empirical documentation necessary?
Empirical.
Documentation.
Documentation, you like that better than information, okay.
And then necessary to verify.
Right.
Can I read, can you read back the entire thing one more time?
Necessary to, to verify that the retailer is or will be, don't forget that part.
Where, where are you? Start at the beginning. The planning board may permit farm retailers to sell their goods even if these goods are not composed of the exact materials and quantities produced by the farming operation.
Right.
The applicant shall provide the planning board with empirical documentation necessary to verify that the farm retailer is actively engaged in producing the raw material for the finished goods being sold.
Okay, but that's is or will be actively engaged.
Is actively engaged or will be engaged.
Is actively engaged or will be engaged.
Producing raw material, that's good.
Of course.
Move on to item six. Uh, my first question came in C. Nobody got any, uh, A and B that print here, I believe.
C is my first one, I mean, D is my first one, actually.
Um, driveway servicing the farm retail facility shall be no less than eighteen feet in width for two-way traffic and ten feet width for one-way traffic between the public street driveway and public parking level up. There's only one road.
That's right.
One drive-in.
That's right, 'cause there's only one curb cut left.
That's right.
Oh, you guys have a little creativity, come on.
I have one curb cut.
Well, I know you only have one curb cut, but let's say it's a thousand feet back, or let's say it's five hundred feet back. You're certain, I've, I've seen situations where you come in, and then you come into a split. And you go around, and, and then you come back out, and I could see that being one-way, especially if their parking lot's really jammed up against the, because of photography or bad layout, and they're doing angle parking, so it's a one-way.
Are you gonna turn around and be able to adapt your fire truck through there?
That's why it's ten feet, make sure, at least I can get a fire truck through there.
Okay.
Would you agree to that ten feet, or would you rather have twelve?
I'd rather have twelve, I always like.
I'd rather have twelve, too, but.
Because it depends on what time of season you're at.
Snow.
Good point, Mike. Good point.
Where you gonna stop at?
I'm good with twelve. That's what a, that's what a typical driveway is. And twelve so a park, so a fire truck can get up there.
Okay.
We're changing ten to twelve.
Say it's twelve.
Then we'll be eighteen of this.
Yep. Okay, John had a question on B.
Yeah.
I mean, we're all in agreement that then. I'm on D.
Yeah, D, and it also applies to B under seven as well. You have less than a hundred vehicle trips, it can be gravel. But what about more than a hundred?
Paid it.
Doesn't say that.
No, but if you go to the parking.
Yeah.
If you go to the driveway section of the ordinance, you do. Actually, we're upping the, uh, we're upping the.
Where? Right, but again, if you're gonna, if you're gonna be, you know, having everything in one place, I think it ought to state that.
Yeah, okay, I would agree with that.
And should be, should be paid.
Otherwise, it will be paid.
Right.
Okay, I have another question about this, and I've been through this through the wringer personally. Where does it start? Because beforehand, we had it listed at your property line, even if you're so many feet away from the public road. And they only measured it from the property line on signage. So if you turn around and measure it from your property line, and if you have twenty feet between your property line and the road, you don't have to do anything with it.
No, you're gonna pay.
No.
Within the town right of way, you pay, period. Sorry. That's town property, you're gonna pay. And that's what it says in our ordinance now, and that's what it says in the new ordinance. You pay within the town private, property, uh, within the town right of way. For the very simple reason, first of all, you're covered in town property, and they'll specify whatever they want. Second of all, we wanna ensure that whatever runoff, whatever traffic does not damage the edge of the town paved road. Very good reason, because.
Well, that, that says it right here, Dan. That portion of the driveway within fifteen feet of a public or private way shall be paved.
Period. Even if it's dirt to dirt. Turning.
That'll be interesting.
That will be.
Somebody off Curtis Road, Ed.
Curtis Road's not a private way, remember?
Nobody knows what the Curtis Road is.
Well, I, I don't know, I, I really, I.
John, did you, what, what did, what did you want edited there?
Well, we're, we wanna add then, after the M O, M D O T type D gravel, otherwise, it will be paved with, by two minutes pavement.
Yep, yeah. Between this concrete.
With by two minutes concrete, right?
Two inches of between this concrete, importance with section five, four, two, four, three, three, which is our, our current standards of that to the five section.
Um, seven, item seven, parking number of spaces. We're showing no less than, now, we have a maximum of a thousand or fifteen hundred, and I went another two. So we're showing no less than, that would be three spaces for three hundred. And no more than, what? Thirty parking places for a one thousand square foot.
Really extremely many.
Question for you, what kind, what do we classify as parking?
Strawberry's just kinda.
In, in fairness to them, you can have no more than, than the, the, uh, ten parking spaces, it doesn't say you have to have ten. But, but you're right, you could put, who would wanna put?
Well, you always need two to start with, 'cause you always gotta have any, yeah. So.
Well, wait a minute, remember, I mean, you, you guys are stuck in R one. Don't forget what's in R four, five thousand.
Number of parking spaces, no less than one parking space. Yeah, right, five thousand.
Five thousand, different game, different game.
So now you're gonna have to have sixteen, almost, yeah, just under seventeen parking spaces.
You could have fifty parking.
Sure, well, a lot more.
You could have as many as the clinic, no, that's not it. And, you know, tell me, gentlemen, whether I'm being, I'm being, uh... strict enough, because currently, our retail, and here's just to keep this in mind, our retail requires one parking space and two hundred and fifty square feet of, um, rose floor area of a retailer in the center.
Okay. Then it should be the same thing here. Probably. It should be, it's, it's retail, we're calling it farm retail, but it's retail, okay.
So that would be four parking spaces for the thousand feet.
Yep.
So this is just counting for my four parking spaces, yeah?
No. So it's per three hundred square feet or part thereof?
No, uh, what Rich is saying is that, under our current zoning ordinance, we require.
Oh, two fifty.
Two fifty.
Okay, I was using the three hundred, okay.
And I was doing three hundred, because I was.
Okay.
It should be consistent, two fifty. Now, I, I question two fifty these days.
Is that car spaces, or is that motorcycle?
Those are.
Parking spaces.
Parks, I know, Marty's got a point, the only place though, that you're gonna have motorcycle space right now is at the taverns.
No, it should, I'm saying is, uh, what I'm saying is, we have the, the description of a parking space in our ordinance for motorcycles.
Yes, we do.
And turn on, it should be starting following through.
Roger that, but remember, we only allow the inters, we, we only allow parking spaces for motorcycles to be, to be, uh, used, or we only allow the reduction in a park, in a required parking space to a motorcycle-sized space, which is half, actually, a quarter of a regular parking space. In those instances where you can, you should, can demonstrate that the use is primarily toward, geared towards motorcycle, motorcycle traffic.
What about a restaurant?
Well.
I'm just, I mean, I'm saying, a restaurant, you, you can't go to a restaurant on a motorcycle roof.
No, you gotta prove.
Yeah, you're parking a regular car.
Yeah, you, 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 you know, a regular car, I mean, where you allow somebody to use a motorcycle space, a four-by-eight spa, or a four-by, what is it, a four-by-six space? Uh, four-by-six space versus an, uh, an eighteen-by-twenty space. Um, the only time that you can substitute that is if you've got a business that specifically caters to the motorcycle ride, you gotta prove that to the planning board. Now, if you can get a farm stand that caters to motorcycle ride, I'm sure we can do that, but in this particular instance, when I say parking spaces, I'm glad you said that, because I should say automobile parking space. It's a very good point, I'm glad you brought that up. So, park, automobile parking spaces.
Two hundred.
Are two hundred and fifty square.
And then.
And more than ten per two fifty.
Okay.
And I would, I would say to be consistent, since we're, we're saying that if you have more than one hundred vehicle trips, that you have to pave the driveway, and if you have more than one hundred vehicle trips, you have to pave the parking lot as well.
Realize, that's fifty patrons a day. It's not really that big. And you know what?
Not their structure.
You know what's unusual about this right here? This is a big gift, because anything that has this kind of traffic anywhere else in the town, you've gotta have a paid parking. In fact, we don't allow any other parking lots to be gravel, unless other seasonal parking spaces. And this is clearly, this is not a seasonal parking space. Remember when we went through the seasonal?
Yeah.
Yeah, and they were, it was from a specific time period. Now, um, so we're allowing them to have a gravel parking lot, whereas where most other retailer uses are not allowed to, and that's, that's part of the, that's part of the image, if you will, you know, running for. And we require either crush stone or type D.
Yeah, okay, but, but getting back to Rich's point and my point of earlier, what about more than a hundred trips a day?
Then it has to be.
Then it has to be paid.
Okay, but then that needs to be specified again.
Exactly, it's gotta be specified.
Anybody, I, I have one more question on the A and B of section A, anybody have a question before then?
Just on, on seven, six.
Six, okay.
Farm retail facilities require more than five parking spaces, no more than thirty percent of the parking shall be located in the front yard of the lot, so if you end up with six parking spaces that are required, you can only, you can only have two of them up front, but if you have five parking spaces, you can have all five of them up front.
Right.
I can see quite right.
Depending on your building layout.
No, it's not based on the building layout, it's pretty specific.
If you've got five thousand square feet building.
Marty, Marty, if you have five parking spaces, you have to have thirty percent of, only thirty percent of a lot up front. You can only have one and a half parking spaces up front, everything else has to be out back. That's what it says. It's, it's not talking about the size of the building, it's talking about the number of parking spaces.
Doesn't it make more sense to just say you may not have more than five parking space in?
In the front of the building. It would be, I think it would make a lot more sense to say, you're restricted to five parking spaces in the front, anything else is off to the side or in the rear.
Well, go to the one where you have a hundred spaces.
Ouch.
Yeah.
And you gotta carry, you guys pass out.
Ninety-five of them, they have to be out back.
Which.
Might not be such a bad idea.
I don't think it would be a bad thing, it would, it would make the, the district look, uh, it would, it would give a better feel and look to the district, because you wouldn't see a huge parking lot with a bunch of cars in it.
Where are you gonna have your entrance and your exit? Are you gonna carry in all your product around the building?
Out the back door.
You have a front and rear entrance.
Yeah, you gotta have.
You gotta have that anyway.
You gotta have multiple points in and out.
You know, this is supposed to be small farm, little retail, walk in, walk around the circle, coming out, you know, I.
I guess five thousand square feet, a hundred parking spaces.
If you're, if you're in the, in a thousand square foot building, you're only gonna have four parking spaces, I don't think it's a problem if the four of them are up front.
Yeah.
It's only when you get into the R three and R four that you're gonna have bigger sizes anyway.
All right, well, so that, which brings up a good point, and we should have a threshold when you start, have to start parking the rest of the parking outside. Five, five might be a little, a little extreme, you know, five parking spaces is maybe double loaded. When I say double loaded, I mean, you know, part, uh, a sixty-foot wide swath that has a twenty-four-foot aisle, two-way aisle, with nine by, nine by eighteen, uh, parking spaces perpendicular both sides, and that's ten parking spaces with five floors. Or else you could say, hey, you can't have more than ten in the front, more than fifteen, or.
What is standard retail called for? Maybe wouldn't, in terms of parking spaces?
We don't specify where it's gotta go.
We don't, okay.
We were talking, we originally, when we first talked about them, we wanted to put some of the parking off to the side.
Encourage, encourage it to the side and to the.
Right.
Only to, only to try to, to make it look more, you know.
How about putting it into the, uh, space involved standards and vary the number out front by the square, the maximum square foot of the building?
That would be a percentage, then.
Why a percentage?
Does that get in the angle by the dagger?
R, R one, you have, let's say, five, R two, you have ten, and then R three and four, you have twenty, you know, maximum from the front.
In the R two, you don't think you could get ten spaces for this?
Fifteen hundred square foot building, of course, Dave.
Well, that's the minimum, remember, there's a maximum.
Yeah. Okay.
Minimum is to ensure that we don't have people parking in the street. The maximum is to make sure that we don't have acres apart.
And then I don't want to put in too much of the necessity. Well, I like John's idea.
Okay, keep it simple, all right, so you want it, you want a, a maximum amount per?
Per district.
Per district.
Per district.
In the front, yeah.
All right, you want me to move this place above? How about if I just put another chart here, let's keep it with a parking.
Good.
Yeah.
I'll just do a different chart here, okay? Charts are good, I mean, the reason, they're better than, than for Rich.
Okay.
All right, so a good chart of parking.
Why not just add, add it, add it into the line into the space involved?
And what is it?
Only because I don't wanna separate parking and space involved, because parking's not a specific, excuse me, whole.
So it's a specific number person?
Yeah. It's, it's a specific number in each one of the zones, and do you wanna take a stab at that now?
Well, I, I suggest a ten, fifteen, and twenty.
I thought you would've said five in, in the.
Five in.
No.
Yeah, five, five, ten.
Five, ten, and twenty, right, five, ten, and twenty.
Well, what if, I mean, five's the minimum, what if the guy, what if, what if? Four's the.
Five is the.
Five's the maximum up front in the R one. If he wants more, he puts him off to the side or in the back.
We have parking setback from side and rear parked property lines, parking setback from private roads.
So forty parking spaces, that, that would mean if somebody were to do maximum of a thousand square foot, they can get forty parking spaces, right? That would mean they only put five out front and thirty-five on the side. It's not worth building a parking lot for five. Figure two, you're gonna take, forty, if you've got forty parking spaces.
It's got.
By ADA, you're gonna have to have two as, as handicap, so there's two going. It's almost like, you know, put all your handicap in front. You shouldn't have to do it.
Wait, yeah, you're gonna.
Within seventy-five feet of the, uh, I don't know.
Ten twenty-thirds, maybe.
You can do that. Which I think, because what, what you would do is, is if you have a double loaded, as I would say, five parking spaces and five parking spaces would be more than, or you could do ten on one way through the building, and they'd all be angle parking, and you just make a, a one-way loop, it's not a sign, which might be cheaper for them to do. Also facilitates people getting out, you know, quicker too.
All right, why don't we?
Ten, all right, so you're saying ten, twenty, thirty?
Why don't you look at it a little more, for to propose, propose that one specific item, whether, come back, okay? R one and R two districts, it seems like we've got these reversed in, in my mind, here we're having a bigger setback in R one and R two than we have in R three and R four. Out here buffering and.
Oh, it ain't, oh.
So we have less of a setback in bigger districts.
Yep, yep.
Why would you do that?
Because you wanna protect the neighborhood in R one and R two, smaller lots.
Well, you wanna protect every neighborhood, don't you?
Yeah, I don't know, you wanna, yeah, wait a minute.
But you're on a five-acre lot. Wait a minute. You're on a five-acre lot.
No, but here you have a possibility of a five thousand square foot building that you've been allowed ten feet? In R four?
A ten, a ten, yeah, achieving a fifty percent blockage.
Well, we gotta discuss that, because we already got problems with that, we.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Okay, so first off, first off, let's just, I mean, here we've got bigger buildings, and we're allowing them closer to each other, I mean, because they both could be at the ends of their properties. Right, I mean, the purpose is to achieve, but, and I agree, I agree with this kind of numbers somewhere, but I think, I think for all of the zones, for farm retail, they should be exclusive to them, whatever, what, whatever one they're in, okay? We know that achieving a hundred percent is pretty difficult, and we also know enforcement is very, very difficult when we add any kind of percentage or, or anything else, so what I would suggest we do is just, you know, we have our side setbacks. That's where, that's where the buffering is gonna have to occur on, on both sides.
It's twenty-five feet in, in, it's twenty-five feet for side setbacks in all districts except the R three, R four, which is thirty-five.
So, those are what needs to be maintained. Right, that thirty-five foot setback?
Yeah, thirty-five in the, uh, R four, but you're not gonna wanna landscape the whole thirty-five feet for a couple of reasons, number one is, you know, you're gonna trade all the land, you know, right up to your building, number one, and number two, thirty-five feet's all a lot of landscape, yeah, it's, it's a lot.
Again, if you're trying to, if you're wanting to try to, and I think you did this very well, one, from the living area of one, but it's a retail, from, so from one retail to another retail potential, what we're trying to do is block the building.
Right.
From some circumference around that building, I would think, right?
Like your house.
Yeah. Bringing things up above the trees, or I'd say. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know.
But the thing is, you're on a, you're on a five-acre lot.
No.
No.
Minimum.
Minimum, minimum, Marty, and then, now, now we're dealing with, um, two districts, R one and R two, and R three and R four.
Correct, you're still on a five-acre lot, no matter what.
You, you're looking at worst-case scenario, you're on a five-acre lot, the smallest lot possible.
Yeah.
You're the five thousand square foot building.
No. You can't have a five-acre lot, you can't have a five thousand square foot in R one and R two.
But you can in R three or R four.
In R four.
And it's still only a five-acre lot.
R three and R. You go back to the table where you.
I am, that's how I'm going.
Right.
So, so again, the idea is to provide inadequate buffering, so that the views between these structures, I don't know that the residential could be, and a proposed retail in there, under, are are buffered, I don't know that I don't know how you arrive at eighty percent.
Not only how you arrive at it, but how you enforce it.
Of course.
Oh, that's pretty easy, really is easy.
Easy?
Yeah.
Then why do we have?
I'm serious.
Why do we have so much?
How, how in the world can you enforce eighty percent?
All I have to do is take a photograph, and then I take, then I do, uh, preliminary measurements of the, uh, the void spaces, it's really easy, I can do it with computer scanner.
Spring, summer, fall, winter?
Anytime.
Winter, when you have the least amount of.
They had to put up that would be.
You can do it.
Well.
Done it.
They're doing it at the same time.
I'll even specify, I'll do a guide and how to do it, if you want me to, I'll put together a guide and actually how to enforce it, so.
From all angles?
From, you're gonna have to.
Take out the line angles, yeah.
I mean, if you have to do all angles, the smart play would be a double row of, of trees and, and property, your smart play would be evergreens and burning, or fence, and your fence might not be that long, as we've, as we've learned, as men we've learned. You know, the, you didn't see it, the, the problem areas, you saw just a regular stockade fence, six feet wide, it's six feet tall.
Yeah, I know, this would be egregious.
Well, no, it's stockade, you know, just regular, everyday stockade, and they built it on spot, but I mean, it was, it was the kind of stockade panels you get down at Lowe's. Oh, I'm sorry, Home Depot, whatever, I don't care. You can achieve it, it's just, you got another technique to do to make sure that you achieve it.
I guess my point simply is, whatever we come up with, why, why would there be a difference in any area? Other than, other than I can see, other than I can see in a residential area, there, it's more likely to happen. But the impact is exactly the same in a, a residential owner here versus residential owner there, so the impact potentially is exactly the same. Um, why would it not be the same? I guess would be my question.
That's good. I think it should be, and I think it, I think it should be blocked from view.
You wanna block completely?
Sure, why not? We're, we're telling businesses that, that they're supposed to do that.
All right, let me ask, let me ask this question, I mean, I, the only reason I made a difference, and I explained this, is that we have a, maybe not in R three, but we certainly have a different attitude about R four. And when we look at R four, and we really look at how we, how it's intended to be in the comp plan, and how it's unfolding in the field is, the R four is actually kind of a mixed-use district, not necessarily a residential district, I think it's always. I think it's always the state, think of R4 as a residential versus a agriculture or a resource protection area. At the same point, there are mixed uses, and we allow gravel pits in R4s. You know, we allow a number of different uses that are clearly not residential in R4. There are activities that we usually associate with more rural-like kind of activities. Um, and farming certainly is. Farming is not on the due call, you know? So consequently, uh, I was looking at a more tolerance level, perhaps, and that probably might be my misassumption. I grew up in R4, I'm living in the R4 district versus living in the R2 district. R2 would have got more subdivision, or R1 certainly, we're, we're talking about small lots. Uh, and don't forget, any subdivisions in the future, we still have the provision they have to have, they have to be clustered. Now we changed that, too, right? And we're going to change that. The, yeah.
But the prob, the, the thing is resolved, depending on, easily, depending on where they put this stockade fence and where they put the tree. And you don't have to do, like you said, that thirty-five feet, but you don't, you don't want all of that activity of cars and trucks and everything else right there, so. So the thirty-five feet, okay, we can live with the stockade fencing, trees, whatever, right at their property line. I can't, I, I mean, if, who's, I mean, there sure can't be the board to say that they need that eighty percent for one, huh?
No, they gotta provide proof that they need it. See, the problem we had with thousands was, they didn't provide, provide proof. All that was required is that they achieve it when they go there. They didn't provide proof that they could achieve. Whereas when they did the last, the last improvement, or the last expansion, which we'll be considering next week, they, uh, they had to provide evidence that they could achieve that blockage, which they did by doing, you know, sub-sections. And, actually, the, the, uh, the test was really done by the, the improvements that were made to block it in Phase One, which has a more, just as much impact on Phase Two as it does in Phase One. But they did, you can't provide proof that you need it.
Okay, I will go. From my comment?
Yeah.
Then in, in, leave the eighty, fifty, how does everybody else come out of this discussion?
Personally, I, I think the amount of blockage should depend upon the distance from the neighboring property line.
Agreed.
So if you've got a, you know, a twenty-acre piece, and you're in the middle of it, I, I don't think you need any blockage.
Okay, so I'm gonna look at it, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna pick on two boys down the road here. If he had not gotten a waiver from his brother?
Yes.
Then we would have forced him to put up a fence to hide that entire piece of property from his brother's view. He, it was- If we're gonna do that for one person, we need to do that for everybody. So if we're gonna, if we're gonna-
That's not an agricultural operation, that's an earth-moving type operation.
That's a, that's a-
But it's a business.
Automobile graveyard.
No, the, the, oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Right. It's, it's, it's a business. And if we're gonna tell, I don't care what kind of business it is, if we're gonna tell one kind of business, you have to completely block everything, then we, we should tell all businesses, you have to completely block everything in that zone. We should not be differentiating between the kind of business that it is, that we are looking at. It, it's an all-or-nothing situation.
I, I would agree with you, except, now that I remember, it's the automobile graveyard, I, I think that's a very different circumstance in terms of, uh, visual screening. I, I wouldn't consider that as a normal business. That's a special situation which, you know, really degrades the appearance of the neighborhood at its hot stream. Whereas a retail, agricultural retail operation, I don't think would necessarily degrade the-
Visible love there in the reward.
I, I, I don't, I don't think you need any blockage.
Well, if you're right up next to someone I can see, but...
I'm, you're gonna do the same thing for your neighborhood, turn it up, you're, uh, you're gonna tell somebody who owns a five-acre lot, or whatever else on it, and you, you cut, go in and cut all the trees down, and by living between one another, you're gonna have, to have the same rules for residency of, of blockage, landscaping, and everything else. Why just pick on the business? What's supposedly good for the goose is good for the gander.
But this is not a business district. This is not business use, I mean, this is not a, a business district, and this is not a residential. A compatible residential, yes. And we require it for contractor storage yards.
Yeah.
Yeah, put ours against that, man.
Same concept.
No, I think if there, there we also argued, as long as you have a, enough of a distance between the property line and the operation,
Sure.
you need a screening.
So we, we would need a graduated mechanism to do this.
See, we talk about, we talk about simplifying this stuff, and-
We're just making it more difficult. Have more, have more hoops to jump through.
They need to interpret and to measure and, uh...
Well, the only reason I put in percentages-
I absolutely agree.
Gentlemen, the reason I put in percentages is because we didn't, we said absolutely block with, with Bentley. Yeah, and absolutely block means walls. You know, most screening, as the word implies, is that you will not absolutely block everything out. There will be, you'll see through the tree, and the trees will change over time. Um, they'll grow. Uh, they'll, it'll, it may start off, you're seeing a lot of, of the project, and then in the next five years, it disappears because the trees grow. So I was trying to provide a minimum percentage that was, that, that could be achieved, that you could achieve. It's a lot better than saying absolutely can't see it. It's better to say, well, block eighty percent of the view. At least it's a number to achieve, it's something, it's, it's better than a hundred percent, because it's so hard. Aside from boarding over the windows of, of the, the guy's house, or putting a fence right at the property line, there's always gonna be some visual, something sort of. I mean, you know that with your own houses.
Good, we've got about six more minutes on this, on this, this criticism.
Yeah, I, I don't care, I mean, it, you know, I, I don't understand, Dad says that there's a way to measure the blockage, okay, fine, I don't understand. I don't know how that would work, but that's fine, I mean, if we want to go with the percentages, not a problem. And, and I know that this is probably, well, I, I, I'm looking at this and I'm reading this, and if I take a literal interpretation of this, "I need a fifteen-foot buffer achieving an eighty-cent blockage of views to be installed between the living area of adjacent and existing residential structures and the proposed farm-retail building." So I live on-site, and I have to buffer my own building.
Right.
I can't have, I can't see my own building.
Well, the intent is neighboring.
Well, I, I think it does too. I think that is the intent, it just is, it says between the living areas of adjacent and existing residential structures.
Yeah, that's right.
Adjacent properties with existing residential-
Yeah, I think we need to tweak the wording on it.
Yeah, adjacent properties with existing residential structures. And the proposed farm-retail building area, so eighty percent, R1 to... Again, I think you've convinced me that less is required out in R3 and R4, and I also agree that distance is probably a factor, but then again, we start getting terribly complicated with it.
Well, I would-
Unless you went to something like, uh, after five-hundred feet, or a thousand feet, or whatever, you know?
And, and do we allow the neighbors to say, it's fine if they don't? Do we give them a waiver? Because the neighbor said, oh, I don't care. I don't care if I see his building.
Well, there are some neighbors who might say, hey, bro, I'll see the building and see what's going on, keep an eye on it.
I thi, I think it would be very, uh, useful to know how the neighbor feels about it.
Put that, that neighbor, and the next neighbor coming around.
And they sell the house to the next person, that like-
You, you sell that house, and somebody buys it, that's their problem.
Yeah.
Cause they would, that business was there.
Yeah, see, I would agree with you.
I would agree with that, I, at the same time, I always remember that, we, we have multiple missions we're trying to achieve, one of which is stabilization of property lines. So, for the simple purpose of ensuring that municipality has a reasonable tax base to use.
So, eighty, fifty?
Do you want me to work on, do you want me to work on a sliding scale, some sort? No, I think, I think just why, how wide the buffer has to be is ridiculous. Kind of thing, just say, look, achieve this level of, of buffer, that's it. I don't care how you do it.
So we're gonna have, so we're gonna have two items come back to us, then?
Yeah. I'll, I'll see if I can come up with a, with a threshold here, if it's more than, it's outside the foreground, it's a thousand feet, five-hundred feet, it's outside the foreground.
Okay.
I'll, I'll figure something out.
I'm not gonna, for, item two, downtown this, this district one, I'm not gonna allocate a whole bunch of time. We all have, uh, well, not all of us, those that were able to attend the last meeting, we've really got a, a really good lesson in signs, and where they are, and how they present, what looks good, what kind of doesn't look good, and some of that-
You have a copy?
Uh, here, you can have a copy of mine.
You have a color one, too? My, my attempts to get a colored printer today, you know? I'll snap this.
So I think, so I think, um, pulling, pulling out the, the main parts of these things, when you, when we look at, now, all your comments, and I don't agree with all your comments, but what looks good, but that looks good. However, for, for the most part of that, I think unusual shapes, like the Admiral sign, the bow top, or crested top, dune top, round, uh, things like that, all do. They step, they stand out, you don't have to, don't have to get any kind of sign to, to see that. The eight foot, um, six to eight, six to ten foot, depending on the different signs, do seem to be reading a little bit clearer than the other, the, the white and the dark background, or, or painted signs, or the dark and the white background, I think are equally, um, appealing, and, and can be, and the cup-
That's another cup.
And, 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 you know, so some of that is kind of a business option. Things like, what is, what is overpowering, the page two, the big oval with the high pedestals. I just find that probably a little expensive, but custom will have a lot more in mind. I could put in a couple two-by-fours there, or, or four-by-fours. Say that, I, I think those are beautiful signs, the Kennebunk savings, obviously stands right out with all of the things that has been suggested. So, Dad, I think you were looking for, I'm not sure, but I think for a few items, where, where do we want these signs placed? Right? Is that what you guys are saying?
Yeah, and, and what I was trying to do with this is, first of all, debunk some myths about signage. That was number one, and number two, cause what I, what I think I found, i- if we, if we were to do a video documentary of this by driving down the road, which I thought about doing, but didn't have time this week, you would find that the smaller, not the smaller, but the, the shorter signs that are within the, the motorist's color vision work better than the bigger signs. And, and they work better because you can read them faster, and they're in your plane of vision, and they're not overpowering, you don't get that mess that confuses your eyes sometimes. Uh, the, the smaller signs work just as well, if not better. That means they're less expensive. Uh, then there's some sign design principles that seem to be consistent. You know, the idea of an irregular sign, that the, the bow top, or some sort of movement on the top, uh, seems to really attract your attention. Round, or the oval works better than square.
Even the top works, I told you, then, all of those.
And you know, I saw another thing that I didn't even notice, and you can see it when you go down on even Route One in Kennebunk, between, uh, here and, and down the center. You see a lot of people do this, and it's extremely effective, and you see it in the thrift shop on page two. They put a little eyebrow, and they put the number, the street number, that the location is at. And I'll pay up, that is, I don't know why I didn't jump on this earlier. From a public safety standpoint, Rich knows this, I can't tell you, as a firefighter, how many times I've gone, especially at night, you get an address, cause you always get an address, of a commercial's place, and most of us don't recognize the addresses, the places we frequent. You don't know that, it's eighteen-twenty Portland, you know, hey, that's down by, uh, that's down by the, in the Atlantic Storage Area, or that's the, the, that's the daycare center. We don't know that. This is, that's really key, and that really makes a big difference. I think that's something, I think we're gonna specify that all commercial signs have the street number incorporated into the sign at the top, where the firefighters can find it.
Or even like this Big Blossom sign, the number on the post.
Yeah, the number on the post that works.
Isn't that already a viable requirement?
It is, but you'd be surprised, something, how many houses don't have the numbers on it. It has to be in the building, it doesn't have to be in the sign. And then the problem is, frankly speaking, really going, especially at night.
Right.
You have, you can't, that's probably, you have to see it, the signs stay everywhere.
What about on private ways?
What do you mean, on private ways?
You'll draw on your own, specify specific addresses, sign numbers.
Yeah. I'm talking about on the signs, rather than, than, residences, they, they should be on the mailboxes. They put them on the buildings, they should be on the mailboxes.
Okay, that's pretty general. That, that's fine, but how many mailboxes are on Route One?
That's the point.
Route gun busts, most of the time, they're clustered.
In a commercial district, though, what we're saying is that it would be much more effective to have, have the street number in the sign. It would be very good from the, from the standpoint of, of public safety. And also to give that little bow at the top of the sign, or something like that, if you require it, that's a perfect place to put it. And I would do a, I would do a prototype to show, hey, this is one way you can do it in this district, to ensure that this kind of information is easily incorporated into the sign. Or it can be put on the post.
Okay, true one.
Which, every one, but, you know, get it on the post, I think that's one of the things I'm gonna, has nothing to do with the aesthetics we're talking about, but has to do with information. I think that's something we should require. I'm sure the fire department will.
Question for you then. Question for you then. About on the property, turn around, you have, you have three different addresses, but not all on the same, on the same road.
Three different addresses on the sign, not on the-
Not on the sign. Three different addresses, but on different roads.
I'm only talking about the signs here.
You're talking about signage?
For business.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying is.
Give an example, Marty, could you?
Please give me an example, I'm lost.
Example, like, okay, I'm Mike, okay? I'm twelve Cane's Way.
Okay.
Okay? But I'm Cane's Way, not on Port, Portland Road.
Right.
Okay? But I have different addresses, one's on Portland Road, and one's on three Cane's Way.
All right, where's your sign? What sign are we talking about here?
I just have one sign.
All right, for your business?
For my business, right now.
Okay, that would be, that would be-
But it doesn't say an address up.
Okay, but the address would be for your business.
But turn out, uh, prior to this, you could have supposedly clustered signs, but you only can have one sign within two-hundred-and-fifty feet. On, on front inch-
You're talking about a directory sign?
Yes.
The directory sign would be the, the directory sign, quite frankly, would be the number on Portland Road, cause that's the way it's done in GIS, or GPS, excuse me, GIS. It's based on Portland Road, it might say Cane's Way, but that sign would be for its address on Portland Road.
But I don't have a Portland Road address.
Yeah, but it would be your location where you-
That's the, the address of the sign.
And the address of the sign would be on Portland Road. And then you would have addresses on your, on your, your other properties with Cane's Way there.
That's confusing.
It is confusing. There's no good solution all the time.
That's probably why people aren't moving.
Well, there aren't that many private ways. There will be more when we do this, this, this.
Okay.
Do you guys want to do it too? Let's move forward. But I think one of the things that I wanted to show were some basic principles that we saw in here. But I think one of the things that I wanted to show were some basic principles that we saw on here, uh, some good design principles. Some of the designs actually are cheaper than some of the other solutions. I'll tell you one thing I did, I did find. I don't know if you gentlemen did any more of the research on lighted signs, especially the LED signs. I found all of them, not many of them work well. I found during the daytime, especially the yellow ones are darn near unreadable. And, and you could see the one in Wells, the Canet Tower, the combination. I think in the last set of photographs I showed you before, I showed you one with a, with a school that had, uh, one. It was very tastefully done and it had the right illumination, but boy, the, the cannon one that just shows you how bad it can get. And if you don't believe that, go down Route One in Sacramento, look at the, the signs that the automobile has.
Yeah.
They're unreadable. They really are. They're, I don't understand what they're doing because they're so, they look great when you see them in the prototypes. If you put them in, in the landscape as you're driving through, it's, it's, it's very much a glare problem.
I haven't found one that is attractive to me. Either the colors don't work or they're too bright or, they don't look good to me. But again, I, I would say it's a business decision. Like, we have to decide, you know, what kind of limits do we wanna put on them if that?
Yeah, I, I would agree. I would say this, our interior lighted, illuminative requirements right now would not permit this because of the, the amount of ruins that come out of, you know, they, right now they won't permit.
They're too bright.
Too bright, way too bright.
Yeah, because the only reason they're too bright is because you have not, because you have nothing to reflect from it, because it's totally black.
Well, some of them are even, I don't know if you've looked at any of them, some of them are, are too bright during the daytime. I just recently, I forget where, but just recently saw one during the daytime that was just.
A lighted sign?
Yeah, yeah, an LED sign.
Oh, LED?
Yeah. Yeah, it was just too much.
Yeah, that's a, if you look on page four.
Yeah, I'm gonna say.
All right, it really shows it, that Canet Tower was screened at.
So discourage LED?
I think we're gonna have to until the technology improves.
That's not LED.
Why discourage LED? I think we just wanna look at the, you know, the brightness. That can be easily measured and we already have some standards in place, right, with the internally lit sign.
Yeah, we have some pretty strong standards.
We could use.
Very strong.
Yeah, I, I, well, I mean, they would automatically apply to those signs and I don't think anybody would qualify right now. Now, I haven't gone and talked to a sign manufacturer, which I should have, probably should have posted to Joe at Skirgo. Or anybody around here and talked to them about the technology, if there's a way to crank it down. And we had talked about that last time. I haven't had an opportunity to talk to any of these.
There are absolutely ways to.
You've got to be, there are only days.
Control the brightness, right. I think the reason they turn them up so much is they want to attract attention, which they do, but I think it's negative attention.
I agree. A sign is no good if you can't read it or if it, you find it offensive.
Right.
And, uh, so, um, one of the things though, uh, yeah, you might not have agreed on, on some of my narratives on here, but what I was trying to do was show, um, some patterns, especially the lower signs, uh, being, uh, more effective. I also threw in there the, uh, the concept of sandwich board signs, which quite frankly, I, I, I like sandwich board signs. I think they, they're an interesting alternative to letter boards and certainly they provide a lot of interest. But the plastic ones that they currently put out are, just don't work as well as other ones that you can do, whether they be painted ones or the ones I showed here, the, the classic chalkboard with different colored chalk on it. And, uh, the out of the box, people put a, a scroll, uh, top on a simple, a very simple chalkboard and then it just, it really, it really, I should have put it in.
There's that little farts can very much. Kennebunk, as you go out, it's some very similar.
Yeah, these are all in Kennebunk. Well, that, that fall cleanup sign, I think does it because of the color of the, the chalk they used. And they have a light on it. Because they changed that around.
We've all had a chance to go through and look at these and we all ought to have some fairly good opinions about some of this stuff. Um, the sign heights, we currently, uh, allow fifteen foot. Um, if we're, uh, less than fifteen foot from the right of way, we allow higher as you go back further. He had provided, had, and this is excellent work by the way, um, provided the, the heights of all of these various signs, how they are. Hopped a little bit in discussion about that cone of visibility to the driver as well as the pedestrian. We should remember some of our things are based on some of the traffic safety, um, standards, things like those kind of things. But overall, um, proposal one, proposal two, um, either, in my opinion, would be good. And we may wanna, you know, eight to ten foot is the preferred heights to the sign. I don't think we want everyone in the, you know, but I don't.
No, no, you, you wanna have the maximum. You don't wanna.
Yeah, so if you're less than fifteen, you know, so what's wrong with the range? Eight to ten feet is where we'd like you to be, somewhere in there.
I didn't fill out all the proposals, I didn't have time, but I wanted, I gave you this sheet to show you where we stand just on sign heights and sign setbacks. And, um, and the idea that, you know, we're, we're looking at twenty-five foot signs and we're requiring, you know, we're requiring people to put the signs back good ways from the road. I'm not sure it's necessarily, if we're gonna have twenty-foot setback from the, from the, from the right of way, our signs are gonna be behind the wall, the way it is right now. It's gotta be closer. And if it's close to the road, that means it's gotta come down in elevation. And probably, you know, when it comes to sign areas, it's probably gonna be.
Which not, which not seventy-one of them back to the first within fifteen feet. They're all gonna want to have their sign up front.
They've got one.
Uh-huh?
Yeah.
So if they're twenty-five feet back, they're still gonna want it up front.
Yep.
So it's the sign, if the sign is less than fifteen feet, that's where it should be. And it doesn't make the genius looking at these things, I don't think, to see the benefit of having it out there.
No.
Two questions for you, please. It says, right of way, where are you starting to measure that from?
Well, remember this, this basically rule in the DB one district, so we're looking pretty much at four different roads. Five. So I'm at Route One primarily, right?
Four of them.
But we're also talking about campground roads, log cannon road, and, oh, excuse me, um, Limerick Road and part of River Road too. Those are areas are all within the DB one district. So right of way changes based on, based on the, uh, on the, on the type of road. For instance, Route One has a sixty-six foot right of way.
Where are you, where are you starting to measure from?
That's the total width of the right of way, sixty-six feet.
So you've measured thirty?
Thirty feet from the center line of the.
Zooming and it's in the center.
That's how they measure it.
Well, that, that's why it's so misleading here. Because the fact is, you also have it so that a sign has to be more than eight feet off the ground, so you have visibility.
Yep. Well, these are our current standards. These aren't the proposed. Yeah, I mean, we've got, we basically have sign setbacks that it can't be within twenty feet of the edge of pavement and it can't be within ten feet of the, of the front, of five feet of the front property line.
Okay, but there's, whereas the problem is, property lines may not be at the edge of the road.
Oh, they won't be. They will not be to the edge of the, at the edge of the pavement. They will not be. Always count on the right of way being wider than the pavement. The right of way width is, depends on the type of road. We've got a state artery, which is Route One. We call it Portland Mo, but it's state Route One. And that has about a fifteen foot to twenty foot, um, uh, distance between the edge of pavement and the property line. Fifteen to twenty. On a town road that's got a fifty foot right of way, usually you have a twelve to fifteen foot, twelve, usually. If it's centered perfectly, you have a twelve foot diff, distance between the edge of pavement and the, and the right of way. On local roads that are two rod roads, thirty-three feet, thirty-two feet, somewhere in there, you're gonna have something in the order of five feet. So, um, what we're basically, what we've gotta do is we've gotta look carefully at how setbacks of signs from the right of way can affect where they land in the landscape and in relation to buildings. You cannot put signs within the state right of way, just can't do that. You can do that, but you know, that's the individual property owner's liability. The town cannot allow signs to go within the state right of way period. The town also has a policy of not allowing signs to be located within the town right of way as, as well. So the question is setbacks from, you know, the pavement and setbacks from the, uh, the right of way can, can property have, the property line being the right of way. We have a right of way, on the other side of that right of way line is the property. So the right of way line is the property, is the front property. So, you know, the question is, do we even want setbacks of, of, of signs from, from the property line? I guess is the big question.
Isn't that the only one you need? It can't be within five feet of that front property line. If you've got an eight foot sign, it's gotta go back eight, eight feet.
Right.
Otherwise, you know, it's gotta be back thirteen feet. Oh, maintain five feet for error in the, in center line. I mean, that's where all of that stuff came from. So if you have that five feet, that the edge of the sign can't be within the five feet, why do we need all of these other?
I don't think you do.
If they choose.
I, I have, I have questions about that.
Somewhere else, let them go do it.
That's kinda why I put it in, in here, to let you know that there, this is very confusing, um, and sometimes it's unnecessary. And what it's trying to do is create a different look for signage, um, based on the type of highway that you're putting it on. And quite frankly, our sign ordinance comes out of a book called Street Graphics. It's a, it's a bible of, of, of sign design from the seventies and the eighties. And, um, and some of this stuff, I think, contradicts each other. For instance, twenty feet from the edge of the pavement and five feet from the property line. Well, so during those measurements, your head's gonna be kinda spinning around. Um, I think we need to make it, and then we also have situations where if we were to have a sidewalk on the edge of the pavement, you know, on the edge of, let's say a, a town road, we decide we're gonna put, we're gonna curb it, put a sidewalk in it. Well, and that's upon the sidewalk. Our current ordinance wouldn't let us put any overhanging sign, projected sign like you see in Portland or Benford or Sacramento, a sign hangs out on the sidewalk. Our sign ordinance doesn't allow us to do that at all. Now that made sense in a rural community where you're requiring giant setbacks from the, from the road, along the one, for instance. But if we're gonna try to create that village look with a DB one, we're gonna have to eliminate that idea and allow signs to project.
With the, the eight foot minimum to the bottom.
Yeah, that's only for safeties, safety purposes. That, that, that's, that's kinda reasonable because it, I mean, you can do it. You can do it south, but anything to make sure that you don't have a problem. Yeah, I think, I think we're gonna do that. I think we've gotta decide whether or not we, we want any restrictions of the, on the, on how far away from the property line the sign goes. There is questions of turning radius and that's where it's gonna come in important. That's where we have that one that says that a sign that's located within thirty feet of a road intersection, uh, has to be three feet or less. Or if they're gonna have it over three feet, then you gotta have an eight foot, but that's kinda self-defeating. And then you got a giant sign.
Yeah, it's gotta be above that so that the visual is through the bottom of it to the intersection.
And I'm not sure, and I think that's the fee. I mean, that's not gonna work in some of these situations. I think, you know, having a low sign makes sense. Three feet is not a small, that, that's a low sign, but I, I will tell you this. You can certainly put, that's within a road intersection. And that ensures that you can see over the top of the sign because the, the average height of a motorist in a sedan is three point five feet. That's their eye level, is three point five feet above the highway. That's the standard. So that's where the three feet keep. But I'm not sure about creating these giant signs in intersections so you can look underneath of them. The reason why they did eight feet is because, quite frankly, automobiles may be at three, five, but a single unit truck is gonna be much higher. So that's.
Now, the other factor to ask you also is, are you doing it considering seasonal?
Seasonal signage?
No, seasonal. Because three feet, you go along Route One, you aren't gonna see anything.
That's right. That's right.
Six feet.
Yep.
Well, you can't, that's a safe, that's a state safety regulate three feet the sign. Thirty feet from any intersection, you can't have a sign greater than three.
Yeah, and that's based on the idea that you have to.
I don't think we could. I'm talking about show height. You have a three foot sign, you're gonna, you're plowing, it's gonna be buried anyway. Then the owner of that property shouldn't put a three foot sign within thirty foot. He ought to come back thirty-one feet and put the sign that he wants. You, you, that, some standards you have to live with.
And some standards, and some standards, you know, quite frankly, no different than site distances. We're gonna have to, we're gonna, rather than specifying in all cases, I'm not sure, we're just gonna have to give them a performance standard. You're gonna have to show us that, that you, you can meet the site distances with a sign tag. Which in other words means you're gonna have to do a, a section that shows that, you know, the elevation of the sign and the, the cone of vision for the guy who's walking down the road to get his three hundred and fifty foot sight distance, or his four hundred foot sight.
I think that eight foot, just in case they, you know, you had the smaller property and it just couldn't go right.
And I think in this case, what we should do is just say, you should not block views, you know, sight distances to the road from, from intersections. It's not hard. I mean, and, and they have to show that they can, they can do that instead of making a specification like Marty's. You know, because this doesn't say that if that thirty foot sign is twenty feet back from the, from the intersection. Says if you're in thirty feet in, in front of, thirty feet of an intersection, you've got, your sign can't be over three feet. That's kinda stupid. The sign, if, if your traffic pulls up and he's ten feet and the, the viewer's eye is ten feet back from the, the curb line, if his sign is fifteen feet back, it's not a problem. So that's why I, some of these, some of these standards are a little excessive.
Well, I think that's why pushing emergency vehicles to make sure that at the intersection, you cause traffic and all.
But I think a performance standard is, makes much more sense.
Yeah, show us that it works. That's all it is. Show us that it works. I mean, we have to do that with sight distances. Whenever an engineer does a sight distance course, we have a specific requirement, it has to be four and a half feet tall. I mean, that's where the, the distance is four and a half feet tall and then they can have a clear view down to, with the mass, to the minimum distance, stopping distance of all coming traffic. We did, we do that everywhere, there's no reason why that can't happen with signage.
Can we, can we expand on this for the next time we will be with?
Yes.
We'll, we'll have everybody think, think about these things. But I'd like us to consider sign numbers, making it mandatory on all of the signs as well as the heights. I think we should encourage some things. If we're going to have these, uh, in the business, if we're trying to come out with a character, encouraging the oval, the bow top, the unusual shapes, which we're not limiting, what we're saying, they don't get this square. The manure, our mansard roofs that you think are so distracting are, are, our wonderful directional signs is, can be, if they're done right. You're in a complex that's got three buildings in the back and you have your sign up front with the mansard and you have red tile on it and your building in back is in red tile on the top. I mean, so part of that was for the directional part, it was to protect the sign from weather and that kinda stuff. But as long as we don't get a row of them, I think it'd be okay. The capital caps on each of the, uh, supporting posts, um, and we don't have a provision, I don't think, do we, for, um, the sandwich boards?
We don't have a provision.
I didn't find it, but I, I think those trucks, I think if you open it up, you know, if it's good for business, it's good. if it's good for business, it's good.
They're great for business because they're inexpensive.
I mean, so use them.
You know, Marty can put a chalkboard out there that has a special name. And he could, and he can change it anytime he needs to. And I'll tell you, they're inexpensive and you pull them in, when the weather gets bad, you can pull them in anytime you need to. And it's, if, they're just, they're just really pretty effective and I really like that. You know, it doesn't have to be chalkboards, I mean, they, we'll have a spec on them. They could be painted, they could have little signs, you know, hung on them. My daughter had one for the.
The examples in there are just striking.
And people like them because it does tell them the specials. I mean, even the ones down in Kenabunkport, the plastic ones told you what the special is. The one way down in the Patriot Run, because that was just too much. But wild bird supplies, great! Just give us a little better presentation.
But if you're a Patriot, Marty can even that one, which is great. Is there, is there anything more specific you need?
The only thing I would, now, I'm gonna bring up one more point, because you said it right there. I mean, in terms of, of encouraging people to, to, to use the design standards, some of the design ideas that we've come up with. The question is, do we specify them or do we incentivize? And that's, I know Rich, Rich and I talked for an hour or two on this and he believes that we set a standard and stick to it and that's it. You get to do this, 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 or something like that. You gotta have something that meets this kinda quality standard and this kinda quality standard and this kinda, maybe not exactly this, but it's gotta be this vein. Or you incentivize it saying, you get these tiny little signs or these, these certain side signs and you get more signage or you can have an extra sandwich board or something like that if you do this kinda signage. I like incentivization because it gives people freedom, I don't have to do this if I don't want to, you know, but boy, it's really to my advantage if I do because I get a little more signage or I get to put it here or I get to put a sandwich board out where I can't, you know, otherwise, something like that.
Does, does a sign affect the property tax?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
You pay an extra tax on the sign?
Course you do.
It's a personal property.
Business personal property.
Yeah, it's a business personal property. Is this sign personal?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes. So's, so's tables, so's table chairs and phones, or anything else.
That's the tax structure in the state.
But the other question is, since I was not here last week, has anybody ever tried to contact in any other businesses to turn around and see what they might think? We're gonna have a whole, we wanna encourage them to come in for a workshop, but we wanted to have something specific, like that thing, to be able to talk to them with, to be able to say, hey, this is, after we've looked at everything, this is where we think we are, what do you think? So, yeah, they'll all be invited.
Now, they'll be invited, but the decision of the board was they wanted to have something for them to react to.
Rather than go through the discussion we did today?
Go through what we've gone through for days. You know, to give them something to react to, to bounce ideas off and saying, this or this, this or this, this or this, versus, what do you think? Because, you know, we haven't had real good luck with, what do you think? I haven't even had luck with the EDC saying, what do you think? So, you gotta give people, it's like multiple choice, you gotta give them choices.
Okay, incentives, how many people kinda tend to?
Well, is it, is it possible to use a tax break as an incentive? If you give us a good quality sign, you don't pay tax for a year or two years on the sign.
I would love to say yes, but the state of Maine does not allow us to do that.
It's a state tax?
State regulates what municipality may tax it, it tells us, they, they regulate everything on taxation. That's why we don't have local option taxes, that's why we can't provide tax breaks for businesses that are moving in.
Well, how did Bedford do that?
They did, they did that by doing a chip district. No, they did a tick district. And they returned the captured value back to interstate. And they found that with Sterling and they did that with a lot of others and the state closed that loophole, so we can't do that anymore. We cannot return the tax, the captured value back to the owner, which is basically a tax rebate. So, the state governs the way we tax and will not let us tax, they govern, that we have to charge personal property tax, they have, they, they govern that we have to.
Okay. Okay. Taxing. One question, one question. In fact, the case, our personal property tax, okay? We're discussing signs today. This is part of, he brought up personal property. Yeah, I, I think we, I think we all keep going down this thing, that's why, that's why after an hour and forty-five minutes, we're, we're sitting talking on page two with something that's either gone pretty quick. Property taxes are an issue for the businesses as we presented, if there are issues, that would be a great time to do it. Right now, we're just trying to get the basic structure for signs. The incentives, the tax issue comes up there, Marty. Now, if you're against it, for it, against it, that's the vote. What I'm saying is one thing, personal property tax, okay? The only ones they supposedly apply to the businesses, but they don't follow to the residents, where they're supposed to also be doing it. Scarborough did, they got their ass humped. But there's supposed to be personal property tax on residential stuff too, but the only one they're allowed to do is to businesses.
I'll tell you honestly, I know nobody who does residential property tax, or residential personal property tax. Aside from the place that's crazy enough to try.
Well, it used to be done.
Well, maybe you can get some input from the assessor about.
Yeah, they do a lot, they do, they do a lot of high-end stuff, yachts and motors and trucks and stuff, so there's a whole category, but we're not.
Other than a tax break, which we apparently can't do, what else, what other kind of incentive could you offer that's meaningful?
Oh, you could do bigger signs, you could do.
But if our goal, if our goal is to have a conforming, welcoming look, I mean, if you put on, if you put on through these things, these are, these are all, some are a little weird, but they sure stand out. You need to call out this one back there, I read it, it looks like from a mile away. And these are, these are all, wouldn't you like those all kind of, and about the, not, not these signs, but.
A rundle, a lot of creativity.
Yeah, a flat sign, no. You know, give us a round, give us, give us these crumb, give us these numbers, give us something, you know, give us something fresh, it's not in a square.
See, that's, that's, that's where I was looking, let's develop a standard. I don't care how big your sign is, I don't care how my sign is. Make it look nice and, and I will, it's a subjective situation, but develop standards that say, you know, no man signs or, you know, you have to have that, what did you call it, that eyebrow. You have to have that eyebrow so that, and put your number in there. I don't care what the rest of the sign looks like, but develop a standard that says, this is what the sign should look like. And after that, how much signage do you want? Because you gotta have your signs look, have that standard, but then go ahead. That's, that's my opinion. Todd is looking at it going, you know, you have to, we'll give you an X number of feet and if you do cer, things in a certain way, then we'll let you have a little bit more.
A lot more.
Or a lot more. I just say, let you have as much as you want, just make it look a certain way.
And that's, that's the issue. I mean, and you bring up the point, Bob, I mean, somebody, somebody will invariably say, I don't care, I'm gonna put that McDonald's sign up, that arch sign, that's what I want. And, you know, you always run into that, that situation.
There's a beautiful McDonald's sign in here that we need.
Yeah, that would have been free for.
Even a little, a little bigger, so the arguments in the way to present, I think that's, you could, I mean, I see both sides of this argument and then hoping for, for others in, in the business community and them. But I would think having that sort of stuff that is readily readable, identifiable, you've got the number.
Chief, that'd be good, so.
How about, you know, me? How about we try it? Because I think it would be a great incentive to business not to be confined to a size. That always seems to be the problem, try to squeeze what they want into the certain size. So, how about we try it, as Rich suggests, where we set some standards and then say, if we go standards, you can have as much signage as you want within those standards. I think that's a pretty good incentive. And if it gets, you know, really overboard, then we might think of trying some limitations afterwards.
That's what I'm saying, we have one, we have a minimum threshold, we go up to a higher threshold, we're not unlimited because unlimited, well, first of all, although it's not a real war, it's expensive. Signage is expensive.
You don't want the billboard and everything, so.
Yeah, but that wouldn't meet our standards.
The banners wouldn't meet our standards.
Unlimited, but it might, so, yeah, I'm in that kinda.
Well, let me put together some standards, let me try to put together some standards on here, because articulating what we've, what we've discovered in this won't be hard and it won't be easy at the same time. And trying, trying to put them together is, is my next goal in order to deal with this very important subject that's important to the business community and important to us from the standpoint of creating that image that we're trying to create.
My question for you is, what is the town or anybody else gonna do for elimination? Or do you still expect the businesses to like Route One?
Well, I'll tell you, Marty, I've, I've already started discussing this with policymakers, I've been talking with it, talking about it. I think the board can take a stand on this. We have to do the comp plan again. Yeah, we need to put lighting on Route One, I don't think anybody argues on that, especially, look, if we're gonna try to create this as a business downtown area, we're gonna need lighting. Pure and simple. You don't have a business area without lighting, municipal light, you know?
I've been saying that for twenty years.
And, and you get to say it some more, because I don't think anybody here is necessarily in disagreement with you on this.
Yeah. But I can't see putting restrictions on, on, on signs right now, because the fact is, nobody wants to do anything. Well, this is the same thing we've done on, on.
With, with the same concept in mind in terms of lighting, I, I would appreciate it if you could talk to a sign maker or two about, from a sign maker's point of view, what their feeling is about lighted signs, what kinda feedback you can get in terms of what's possible, what in their opinion, since they're in the business, is tasteful and effective and that kinda thing. And both internally lit signs and LED signs.
I'll tell you what, the best ones that I, and I, so we started doing this and I went out and tried to take pictures, the ones that had the simple floodlights on the ground that are shining the light right up and against them are the best. You know, I mean.
But they're selling a lot cheaper.
How big are they, cheaper than a lot of them?
I'll tell you, I've, I've worked on a lot of projects over the years, you know, as a private consultant and those things, always certain cheapest, easiest things to build.
And they look nice and if you get them down to a lower level, I can see where they wouldn't wanna do it at twenty-five feet. But we're gonna run out of, we're gonna run out of time, so I'd like to, I'd like to close down this part conceptually, I think, for item three. Ted, you just wanted to briefly go through this, is that right? For the Townhouse Corner District discussion, to the extent?
Yeah, I wanna give you a little update on that, yes. The reason I put in this is because we have a public hearing, which they'll be having, which the EDC's gonna be having for the Townhouse Corner residents and property owners on January eighth, I believe it is. We're still, I think we've got a venue, I believe it's being Kenabunkport at the Historic Society, but it's down in that neighborhood, so look ahead, it's just across the border. I think that's secure, I got an email today, it looks like, it's looking good. And the issue that they're gonna be talking to the residents there, we'll be having a little design, you know, session to talk about integrating business into, into that district. We're also gonna be inviting Kenabunkport, not necessarily they'll come, but they're on the other side of the road, doesn't make sense to have half of the district on one side, half of the district on the other, because their half of the district right now is, is farm and forest and it's very restrictive. So, but the thing that they, they've been bringing up, and I think I've mentioned it the last time around, is that they're proposing, the EDC is, is very aggressive, they say, why don't we take this all the way to the Route One Quarter? Which creates a whole new district and it has distinct implications for the.
Third time.
I think I got some feedback from you on this last time, which was, state road, is it? It's state road, yeah, it's state road. But it's in the comp plan, it's, it's, it's a rural district.
But that's okay, because if there's, if there's a desire on the part of residents of that area to go in this direction, that makes the comp plan very easy to change.
Exactly.
And, and you've got the empirical, I mean, from the resident, depending on numbers and so forth, where a lot of times we have to take these numbers and those numbers and say, okay, we suppose, but you get a strong enough following.
Good.
Glad you hear that.
And I think the board is all invited to come, of course, and, and you know, one of the big incentives is Jim Burrows is gonna provide the refreshments, if you've ever had any of your food down at Winks, just for a whoopee pie as a moment, it's worth coming out. I'm serious. That's why we get full attendance at the EDC meetings, I'm telling you. Jim brings in her, last, last time I had, I had a, I had a pot roast dinner and pumpkin pie.
What day is our DB?
It wouldn't be that beef dinner from last time.
People in the audience.
Everybody knows that's how you get a turnout in any design or any, any kind of event. Food, and good food, let me tell you. Winks does fantastic food, so Jim does a wonderful job. So, put that on your calendar on January eighth. Be great to supply one.
What day is it on?
I believe it's Wednesday, I think.
January eighth?
And Tuesday. Is it Tuesday? It's Tuesday, right. Yeah, because the first is a Tuesday.
Yeah.
At what time?
Uh, I think it's gonna be six, six-thirty.
You'll let us know as soon as you have a date, right?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make all the announcements, just like I did with the, with the Route One Quarter, I will be sending invitations out to every single property owner. Same thing when we do the DB, the DB One workshop, I'll be sending out the quest cards.
So, that suffices the Townhouse Corner?
Yeah, the only other thing is, I think I'm getting pressure now and I, I guess I'm gonna push it off the, on the board, about doing, starting to do some comp plan updates simultaneously to doing this. I don't know how the board feels about that, but I'd like to get your feedback on that.
Do we comp plan updates now? Is it over due?
Yeah, we do. I think we've encouraged to get that group back, not that group or that group, but that committee. And I think that's pointed either by you or the committee.
I've already talked to a couple forum members, apparently they wanna, they're willing to come back and.
Go over there.
I'm gonna get.
By you guys and not the board selecting them?
No. It's by the planning board, because really, frankly speaking, well, actually, the town manager makes, makes the appointment and it's, it's a consultant, that's not the term. It's confirmed, thank you. It's confirmed by the, it's sort of like, it's like Secretary of State.
The town planner is responsible for the.
The allocation.
I can see that on the chart.
Yeah, it's in the chart.
I think we would change on that.
Told you to do that a long time ago.
I know. I think, I think if we, it'll be easier if we do it concurrently.
Marty was on a lot of that, I think, yeah.
You wanna be on that again, doesn't you?
Yeah.
You look excited.
The only thing I suggest is, okay? Have some business people on, set this up, because otherwise, we got ramrode it.
Oh, absolutely, we're not gonna, we're not gonna make that same mistake. And don't forget, the EDC's gonna wanna participate too and they're all business people. All of them are.
You asked, right comment, I gave it.
And that was a good one. Yeah, it's a good comment.
Downtown Business District Two. Downtown Business District Two, discussion of uses? I'm gonna open it up there. We had gone, when we went through the DB One, I thought we were gonna open up the back, and there was some discussion about trying to identify maybe there's one or two things that you might not want. So I'm gonna just leave that for you guys' discussion. I know where I'm at on this whole subject. But I do have to excuse myself, unless you wanna stop for about five minutes. Take a break for five.
It's up to the chairman.
Well, no, we don't do anything, but I'll put a little board, okay? Five-minute break?
What time do you plan on the journey? Better than my goal, anyway, because I'm moving to... Or whenever it's done, we're done soon. Yes, I will pause the video. Should've done that video.
Don't try to remove control on that?
No, unfortunately.
Start, start, or just pause?
The record button is also the pause button.
Really? Okay, if we lose it again...